Thanks, Warren.
You get to wear a key to enter. Like when people call, I'm like, you know, it won't be answered. I don't need them for that. I drop it enough. But I figured tomorrow we could get that. Well, that's the problem. This thing's so old. Every time I've tried, it just like, it won't do. I wish I did come in here and called. I've got too much.
I'm recording this one here, right?
Yeah. Beat it over, so it's thinner. You know how I am with ladders. There's no way I'm climbing up there.
No, you probably don't need to get. Well, I told Warren that he's high challenged too, so he can.
I'm screwed at heights. I'm screwed growing taller than this.
You keep talking up over here on bed.
That's my dad beating me.
They were off. They were off. Got Georgia, Georgia on Saturday. That's the big. How they gotta win. Wait, wait, what are you talking about? They. If they want to, if they want to play for the SEC, they gotta win. Get the playoffs. They think that they've gotta win two of the three games. It's possible. They're two, two point hundred dollars, two point hundred dollars. All right, we ready? All righty, um, all right, before we start, we're gonna have to do this meeting a little bit different. I'm gonna start with a letter that Tina sent me, and then I'm gonna explain to you what, what it means. So the letter says, Judge Graham, I wanted to bring to your attention an issue regarding the posting of the Commissioners Court Agenda for the meeting scheduled on Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five. The agenda was posted online on Tuesday and physically posted on the courthouse on Wednesday, November fifth. Under new requirements set by House Bill fifteen twenty-two, which took effect September one, twenty twenty-five, meeting notices must now be posted at at least, at least three business days prior to the meeting, rather than the previous seventy-two hour rule. Based on this new law, the agenda should have been posted on or before Tuesday, November fourth, not Wednesday, November fifth, to meet the business day requirements. Because the physical posting occurred a day late, the notices do not meet the new statutory timeline. Out of abundance of caution and to ensure full compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act as amended by House Bill fifteen twenty-two, I recommend that the November tenth meeting be canceled and rescheduled for a later date to allow for proper posting. I also want to extend my sincere apologies for this oversight and any inconveniences that may cause. I take full responsibility for the delay and will ensure that all future postings meet the three-day business requirement under a House Bill fifteen twenty-two. Please let me know how you'd like to proceed. Young County Clerk, Tina Gilliam. So they changed the rule, but they don't define what three business days means. So we've had three lawyers look at it. One lawyer said, no, it doesn't meet the definition of three business days. One lawyer said, yes, it does meet the definition of three business days. And then another one this morning came back and said, it probably doesn't meet the definition of three business days. So we, the, the agenda was done on Tuesday. It was posted online on Tuesday. It just was not taped to the courthouse doors on Tuesday. It was taped on the courthouse doors on Wednesday. So out of an abundance of caution, we're not gonna vote on anything at this meeting, but we're gonna go through, we'll have our open forum, we'll have some presentations. We're gonna table all votes, and we'll do those on, we'll, we'll post a new meeting for next Monday to vote on things. So just, you know, the, the three business days. So today's Monday, one business day Friday, two business days Tuesday, three business days Wednesday. That's one interpretation of three business days. So we were, we were, the website, we were fine. It was posted correctly on the website. It was just put on courthouse doors. Another definition of business days is full business days. So that you can't count the day you post or the day of the meeting. So that would make it Tuesday, and that's what we've been doing. We've been, you know, we submit the agenda out of my office on Tuesday, and then Tina's been putting it on the website and put it on the bulletin boards and everything on Tuesday. And that's how we've been doing it. It just didn't get posted until Wednesday. So I think, I think we should be safe and not vote on anything today. Does that sound reasonable? All right, well, let's, uh, open with prayer and pledges.
Let's all pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today just to ask for guidance in this proceeding, dear Lord. Give us some wisdom and understanding to do the will of the people, dear Lord. Be with this country, dear Lord, as it goes through these trying times, dear Lord. And dear Lord, we just ask you to watch over these people dealing with sickness, disease, dear Lord, and loss levels. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let the ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Okay, let's go to public comments. Who'd like to be first?
I will.
Please.
I'm Debbie Rhodes. I know most of these faces here at the table, and I just think y'all are mostly really good guys. And so we're on different sides of something. I'm against the data center. And I always hope you guys would have open minds so that you would kinda see where we're coming from. It's nothing personal. It's just an issue. And just kinda hear us, hear what we're saying and not just think we're the opposition. I appreciate that. And I'd like to give the majority of mine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name's Warren Norrie. Can I approach?
Yeah, of course.
I have a petition here for you. Petition has sixteen hundred small names, online petition as well. I don't work. People normally stand.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Version of it here, so I'm gonna go with that. The, uh, the petition has, as I said, sixteen hundred something names to it, and, uh, that's about a quarter of your voting electorate, or ten percent of the county. So, uh, and that happened in less than three months, so. Before he's, before he's done. Couple of things I wanted to point out that's on this, uh, is that it's, all we're asking for, and I represent the concerned citizens here, is that you take seriously your charge, treat everybody fairly. Now, I already heard two pieces of wisdom this morning, you know, the decision to put off votes. And of course, opening prayer is always a good idea. I always know I'm in front of a good crowd and everybody knows the Texas pledge. That only happens in certain groups. But, yeah, I'm a capitalist, so if something reeks of NIMBY, not in my backyard stuff, I don't care for that. What I do like, though, is when people are treated fairly. So, uh, to me, these folks, I've lived here a long time. I understand you. They've been here a couple of generations. And.
Cell phone, camera. No recording. Yeah, you're technically House Bill's recorder.
The, uh, so if you, if you treat everybody fairly, in the same way you treat all the rest of your constituents, that's one thing. But typically, what I see in these kinds of things is you have, well, we need an exception to this ordinance or this, this, this rule. Uh, in the county area, my experience has been the fire marshal is kind of the, he's, he's the big cheese. If he says it's okay, it's gonna be okay. If not, it's not. But there are rules that, that I would ask you to make sure are applied by, whether environmental or water or whatever. I'm familiar with, with the operations of the organization that's here, and I know that they don't use as much water as other folks do, so that's a good thing. But you'll be asked to accept economic analyses that are designed and paid for. Or people who want it to come out a certain way. Of course, we're all, Dallas advocates for people to pay us, right? So we're not gonna worry about the cost of the road. It has to be expanded to do that. We're not gonna put that in the cost. We're going to assume that all these temporary jobs are permanent or not. Uh, we're gonna assume there's no expansion that's gonna be necessary when it's already planned. We're gonna make rosy scenarios that, that really don't, uh, hold up at the end. And, and what, and, and as part of this, what you're supposed to do is you're doing, right? You've got somebody who's looking at this, negotiating on behalf of the county. They've got somebody that's talking to you. The problem with, problem with folks in this name, in this world, and this is where you guys come into play, those folks are, their job is to make a deal. Excuse me. And if they don't make a deal, then they feel like they failed. Of course, their job, your job, is to make sure you don't get a bad deal. It's not to make a deal. Your job is not to make a deal. Your job is to protect your constituents. So if somebody says, well, we made this deal, you have to look at it and say, well, I'm glad you've worked on this and you've got this deal. But the person you've hired to make the deal will feel as though that person's failed unless the deal is struck. So all we're asking, excuse me, is, uh, is that you treat people fairly. Now, I've been a part of a number of these kinds of organizations, and some pass, some fail. Uh, and it's always, one city council member told me, Warren will always be this company. And I said, it's not gonna be me bringing them up. It's gonna be them coming to you with yet another favor they need. Tax abatement or a slide on this or a slide on that. We talked to this state rep about this. There are always gonna be wanting favors. And the problem is, once you start doing this, you've got a fork in the road, right? Once you've taken the fork, if I'm, I, I, I took a, a vacation with my family to Seattle, right? You go to Seattle one of two, three ways. But if you decide to take the coast of California, you can't decide that you're gonna go up through, through South Dakota and see Mount Rushmore. You've already made that decision. What the tendency is, is for you to make one decision that says, we're gonna do this, and then six months later, when they want something else, you go, well, we've already taken this road, so you wind up giving it to them. One of the things that happens, and it happens all the time, a, a water plan will be developed and approved by whatever organization is to approve it. And then the neighbors that have been there for a thousand years, they wind up in the problem. And the big organization that caused the problem says, we got a permit, so don't, don't worry about us. You can't sue the, the government entity that did this. It sucks to get in. And, and then when you try to sue the bigger entity, well, it's very difficult for a normal, regular person to fight back against these organizations, once they've got the approval of the county, of the city, of the state, whatever it is. So I, I know that you guys only have limited impact, and you're not being asked to do the whole, everything. But you are asked to do some things, and we would ask that you treat them no better and no worse. If anything, a little more respect eyes. They're brand new. These people have been here, right? So if you wanna treat them no better than the people that are here, if you give them an abatement or give them any kind of favor, that's not what you give to everybody that's been here already. You don't wanna say the people that've been here already and put, put the blood, sweat, tears for decades and maybe a century, some families, in this room. Uh, you don't wanna see that go away. You don't wanna see them being improperly taken care of. So, one of the things that I would ask you to do, or ask data to do, is put everything online. If there's gonna be a permit, throw it online. Don't ask, don't ask these people to send in unending information requests. You know, it's better just to throw it out there, let everybody know it's gonna be very clear. It's gonna be online, so you don't have to ask for, for information requests. And, and fight that with the term in general. Just get it out there, let everybody see it from the get-go, so they can at least see what's going on. Remember who brought you here and who's gonna put you back here next time you run. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, if you'd like, but that's all I have.
They, they hadn't asked, I mean, we're so early in this process, they hadn't even asked for anything. Just really, we're still in the learning stage.
I give you, uh, they were in, I think it's Elk Village, Illinois.
Okay.
And, uh, they, same group, pretty sure the same group. They, they bought out fifty-five homes in a, in a neighborhood. They got the whole neighborhood turned into industrial zoning. So if you were one of the fifty-five homes that got the million bucks to leave, you did great. If you were the fifty-sixth with that, your home turned into an industrial area. And that's, this order, I'm pretty sure it's this organization that did that. So that's what we're yelling about. They don't, I'm sure they don't mean to harm anybody. They just don't care about anybody other than their business, right? That's what people do, right? So it doesn't mean they're evil. It just means that they need you guys to protect these guys. So, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you.
Uh, my name is Charlotte King. Um, I live in precinct four. And a few weeks ago, I sent an email to Judge Graham and Commissioner Wiley. Thank you for your response, quick response, and for meeting with my husband and I, and, um, answering some of the questions that we had at that point. I've yet to hear back from Commissioner Wiley. But I do have a couple of extra questions. From what I have heard and read, Stream is interested, and you even spoke about it, Stream is interested in becoming a part of the City of Graham being annexed. Um, so one of the things that we discussed and that I've heard a lot of is that if they become a part of the City of Graham, they would be under all of the City of Graham's ordinances. And so there's really no reason for the county to give a tax abatement about noise ordinances, water usage, light pollution. So there's no incentive for the county to give any tax abatement if they're gonna become a part of the city. And so they should be taxed just like every one of us. That's my first point. And how do you feel about that, any of you, all of you?
Well, the one thing, you know, any, any sort of noise abatements that we would put in a contract would be temporary. They would expire at the end of an abatement agreement. That's the only, that's the only place we can put noise type abatements in. But I, I, I totally, a secret point.
I mean, if they're a part of the city, the county doesn't need to regulate that.
But it's gonna take time from the point they start to the point that they do become part of the city. And that would have to the city to do and get them annexed in. If we, if, if we say, okay, we're not gonna do this because, uh, we're, uh, y'all are gonna be part of the city, and then they turn around and don't become part of the city, then we're stuck with them.
Is that not pretty much going to be decided before they, I mean, how are they gonna have water?
Well, as far as the city annexing, it's up to the city to do that.
Is there no conversation between you guys?
Not on annexation at this point.
Okay.
I talked to the city, and I, I'm not sure what the city's approach is gonna be to this. I, I haven't been able to get good feedback.
But it's such a beneficial site for the data center, number Stream. You know, I mean, I feel like we should get all of the tax money for the county as possible.
I would hope, I would hope the city and county would coordinate.
Yes.
I, I.
I think that would be.
And I am trying to get the city to, I guess, take this a little more, you know, take it serious.
Yeah, because it's a serious issue for the city.
Yeah, it's a big issue.
And then, question number two. And I'm not, I don't understand all of the funding and where it goes, so I need some explanation. If the county does give a tax abatement, does that money go into the general operating fund, or does it go into a discretionary fund where the commissioners can use it at their discretion?
Typically, it goes to the general fund.
Typically, or always?
I mean, you, just like any budget, you do, do it however you want. This, this county has always put it in the general fund, is how it's always been done.
Okay, so it doesn't go into a separate fund. Okay. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes.
Brett Nance, I got a unique perspective, I think, on this. I'm a fourth generation, actually. His family's been here since eighteen ninety-seven. I also had the misfortune to work on a wind farm for three years, but in the early years. It's not directly related, but it's analogous. We were basically told back then to skip safety protocol, environmental, environmental protocol. And as long as it hit clean, the turbine from falling, they didn't get a sensor, sensor, leak, leak if it failed out. So being on the ground, being up there in those turbines, they're gonna protect their butts. And I'm just, it's kind of a cautionary tale, what I've seen working on those. The amount of oil grease, air pollution, ground pollution, water pollution that has ripped out of those. My job was to clean it up and keep them running. I'm just kinda giving y'all a cautionary tale to read the very, very fine thread on what y'all agree to or what this county agrees to. Because they can pencil with it to make it look like it's in our favor, when it's really not.
Okay.
So.
Melissa Sullivan. Um, I'm in precinct four. I go, um, I'm gonna be very close to all of this. Uh, and my land is. And I'm concerned that there, we've heard what you would like to do, how you would like to handle it, all of you, I guess. But we have seen no guidelines of what your expectations are or what, how you want everything handled, such as the EPA problems. I get a lot of runoff from that area. That fills my tanks. And if I don't have that runoff, if they change that layout, I have no water on the south side of my property. That, the water I do have, is it gonna be contaminated or are there gonna be problems with it? It's gonna go directly into Briar Creek. Briar Creek goes directly into Grand Lake. So I'm looking for y'all, if y'all are supposed to take care of us, to give me, you know, guidelines, specific guidelines of how things are gonna be handled, what the expectations are. And I'm talking Sullivan, excuse me, because I'm all found out in the Mount River. Um, you know, but what are, you know, what are the expectations there? I'm usually behind the eight ball. I don't pay a whole lot of attention to what's going on around, you know, with other people and other things. But when I found out this, I called Mr. Wiley, and, you know, I had to mention, okay, I had found out this is gonna be at the back of my property.
Wait, I don't even know what you're talking about.
I don't either.
The solar, I just said.
Wait, but, but, there is no. There's none. I don't know the solar. In precinct four? RBS Investments, uh,
Yes.
From East Side Lake Road to. Okay, I, we've had no conversations with them, or at least I've had. Well, it's under, it's under release agreement with Analyst Energy. Yeah, I don't even, I don't even know the project. Seven thousand acres.
Okay, well, let's go back to the data centers then. I've been reading your stuff. Have you actually set out guidelines? I expect this, I expect this, I expect this. We are not gonna hold, we're gonna hold them to this.
We are not anywhere, I mean, at some point, I, yes, that will happen, but I haven't even seen plans or.
But what point? It's like raising a kid. You go in and you go, okay, I want this kid to be like this. So I need to have guidelines and I need to have stipulations.
I agree a hundred percent, but we've gotta get, they've gotta have plans and, and be able to actually.
For you to have your, for you to have your rules in place of what would, you would and would not go for. So we would know where we stand. You do not have to have their plans.
First of all, we don't know if we're even coming or not.
Well, it doesn't matter, Jimmy.
It, it, it does matter. It does matter.
Why?
But we don't know where they're gonna place these things on that seven thousand acre or anything else.
So it's gonna be different in the seven thousand acres than it would in a different seven thousand acres?
By what way? Eight hundred acres. No.
No, you're, we're, he's talking about.
Are we back to the Sullivan?
Yes, he's talking about me.
Six one, half dozen the other, they're all nice.
But, but it does matter, because we don't know your guidelines. We voted y'all in, but at this point, we're questioning your standards, what you require. So it does matter for us to know those things. So when we read all this information from you, we don't get in a panic and we don't go, oh my gosh, I have no idea where he stands on this.
How do y'all plan to protect us? That's what she's trying to say.
You know, I mean, you, there needs to be rules, just like there is everything else. And it doesn't happen after you get the plan. It doesn't happen after you get the plan. You don't make the plan after somebody gives you an offer. You make the plan before and have them meet your plan. So that's all I have to say. Can we say something?
I'll follow that up. Hang on just a second. Fifth generation. That's me, so I beat you. Okay?
All right. I'm six. I beat you. You're alive.
I'm clout. I'm somewhere down there too.
Let me, let me tag off what she's saying, and, and I think maybe this may tie things together, is that when we feel like that, that you're trying to convince us how good this is going to be and how pretty it's going to be, all these kind of things, we think that you're working for Stream, not working for the residents of Young County.
Amen.
That's really where it's at. I appreciate that Graham, I got to meet with him this week, and I told him the same information I'm gonna say out loud here in Commissioner's Court, even though it's not documented. I would say this, is that.
It is.
You're, okay.
We're live.
And I don't care whether we're live, but I'm, I'm saying that I, I see these butterflies and rainbows and unicorns on one end, and I see some citizens of Young County creating this, uh, the world's falling apart, hell in a handbasket. There's truth in the middle somewhere, and I think that's what we wanna know. And I think her point is valid, saying, listen, we wanna trust the guys that we put in leadership, that they care about us more than they do about Stream. They care more about us than they do about the solar farm that could come in. Now, I know, and I told him this, and I'm gonna say it out loud in front of the entire public, I know that what we face as a county is expensive. We've got failing streets. We've got failing, you name it, water systems.
Everything.
Uh, sewer, we, we, we understand all that, but at what cost are we going to give up? How much land are we going to give up? Because it's not, we're not just talking about one project right now. We know on the table, because you've spoken about it, we're talking about five projects on the table. At what cost are we going to give up what we have as a, as a county? We love this place. We, we love what we get to drive through. One of the best scenic routes is Highway sixty-one. That's a beautiful route that many of our citizens, and you know this because we do crawfish in cannons, and they get to drive down this beautiful route to our, our beautiful facility out there at Fort Belen. And I, I just, I don't wanna see that mucked up. And so I think what the citizens, I think, what I have heard around the county, and y'all know, I talk to everybody. What I have heard is that we don't think that you're listening because you're selling, you're selling the project at all these beautiful things when we know it's not gonna be completely that, and we know it's not gonna be completely off-city. Work for us. Put us at the forefront of your mind. And if you've got sixteen hundred and forty-seven names, and you know that there can be more, if you've got that many people saying, stop, please, please listen, and please. That's all I'm saying.
I think that we do care more about y'all than we do those others, but we haven't had the opportunity.
I think that we do care more about y'all than we do those others, but we haven't had the opportunity to present what they have to offer. And last time I checked, we don't live in communist America where we say, you're not gonna get no water, you're not gonna get no electricity. If they wanna come present a project to us, then we have to be open and listen to what they have to offer.
No, and I agree with that, but the problem is, is that when, when we feel like you're trying to paint this beautiful picture.
You're feeling like that, but you're not seeing the big picture, we don't have anything to offer you, they have not brought anything for us to give you. And they bring something to us, we give it to you.
Scott, you wanna push this beautiful facility out there in the middle of Garland, and that is not it.
We're just presenting evidence to you.
That's not true, because that's what you did to me, and you said, hey, go out here and visit it.
That's what I said, I made you a visit. I made the look at one, I know what it looks like. That's all I'm saying, is go look at it.
Were you there during the construction? Because that's huge.
There was construction there, I looked at construction.
Ten years of construction in that beautiful area he just talked about. Heavy equipment and trucks going down Elm Street. One half of ground is gonna be completely disrupted. You can't put a pretty bow on that. Nothing you can say will make that any better.
We did the same thing when Walmart.
No, sir, no, sir. This is not.
Not even blown.
And I want to say something. When we just said, please have an open mind and listen, and that lawyer spoke about trying to protect the people, and she stood up and said, we'd like to hear how you're gonna protect us. And I said, that's what, that's what she wants to know. You two said, protect you from what? That's a problem, Stacy.
Well, here's the deal, if y'all let me add, add to this. At this point, the, the farm she's talking about, we haven't had it brought to us. I have absolutely no knowledge of it. The only thing we can do at this point is enforce what the state allows us to, and that's all we got.
I understand, but.
And, and that, we can, we can bring in EPA and stuff, and do the environmental studies. But it's, the state mandates that we get done. As far as the county regulation on it, though, we don't have one at this point.
But the state doesn't.
We're not ready for this.
The state doesn't mandate an environmental impact study, that's government, that's federal. Texas State doesn't.
But the, the only way we can put any sort of regulations on them, because the state of Texas does not allow us to zone, does not allow us to do ordinances, we don't have those abilities. The only way to build something in is to have a contractual agreement with them.
What about a reinvestment zone, is that on?
A reinvestment, all, all a reinvestment zone, that's, that's, the name is a political name. A reinvestment zone is just the boundary that, that a county is allowed to do an agreement in.
But do y'all vote on that?
We would, yeah, you have to vote on a reinvestment zone, and you have to do a reinvestment zone to do an abatement slash pilot agreement. And that pilot abatement agreement is the only place where a county is allowed to put in noise ordinances, setbacks, green space requirements, water restrictions. The things that I think you want, that is our only tool for doing it.
Who regulates that and makes sure that they do what they said they were gonna do?
Well, then that would be the county's job to do that, and the penalty for them not doing it would be the voiding of the contract.
So they just lose their abatement?
They would lose their financial incentives.
But they would still be able to do whatever they wanted to do?
They, they can do, they could build almost anything they want right now, and there's nothing the five of us can do about it.
And so, basically, so if they come in with no abatement, and you, you just, you know, you say, well, it's a free draw, whether you, whether you do what you're supposed to do or not, or you get an abatement.
And we put restrictions and limitations on it.
Who's gonna go out there and look over their shoulder and make sure they're doing it the way they said they were gonna do it? That's ten years of construction.
Well, it would be whoever's on this board.
And y'all would go out there and you would regulate, and are y'all qualified? Are you qualified to know?
Like, you have to have any, any firms or that.
Yeah, you, you, you've hired people to help, to help with that process. I mean, you, we, we would need help, absolutely. We're gonna, we're gonna need, we're gonna need a lot of help regardless.
But so, what I, I think what a lot of people think, and this is, this is where I'm, this is where I am. That construction deal kills it for me. If everything you say, and all the good stuff and the pretty picture they, they tied up in a bow with, and all the money is coming in, ten years of a construction site of that magnitude changes ground forever. We are no longer the small, beautiful town with small-town values. We've got, all these people have come in, and it won't be just one. Because you've already got somebody over in Loving talking about one, and then you got the solar. So our whole, that's, that's why we get so passionate. It's our way of life that's gonna change.
Hundred, a hundred percent agree with you, and I share all of your concerns. I share all of your concerns. My biggest fear is they just come. And we don't put any kind of limitations on them.
But what if we don't encourage them with money? What if we don't encourage them?
That's what I'm just saying, that, that's my biggest concern, is if, 'cause, 'cause that is the one tool we have, is, is the money part. And we, and, and we do nothing. My big fear is they build it anyway, and we have no sort of, any kind of say in what that looks like.
So do you, you guys have the ability to have an actual environmental impact? Like, what is this water and runoff is gonna do to our lake? Because there's back-up creeks.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Do they use soil stabilizers? What do they use, what kind of chemicals coming off those buildings? Like, can you guys do that study before they even get close enough to doing this? Can you guys figure out what they use? Can you, can you do research? Can you have professionals come in and do a study? That, that can say, this won't work here, this is our drinking water? Are y'all willing to do that?
We are, yes, we're willing to look at all that stuff. Now, the problem is, doing that now, we, where's the money gonna come from to do all that? So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to figure out how we're gonna pay for all that.
Well, I think it'd be worth it, because this is the time to do it, before they get so invested, they don't, they fight you over it. If it's not good for our county, that's who y'all are, y'all are protection. That's what we're talking about.
And all that, I mean, I think all that starts when they, when they ask us for something, because this thing doesn't have to go fast. There's nothing that says that this has to be a fast process. This can be a slow process and give everyone an opportunity to learn. And we're, we are in the learning stage right now. Every week I'm learning something new.
This can be, this can be a slow process, I agree with you on that. The solar part is not, they have deadlines to meet, they are crunchy. And it's been said, and I wanna put this out there, I've talked to several people, you can't tell anybody what to do with their land. We're not trying, there's a misconception that we're trying to tell somebody what they can do with their land. I beat you, I'm sixth generation, my kids are set-ins. I would not sell my land for three million dollars a square foot, I don't give a shit. We, and then somebody posted it, oh, it's eight, only eight hundred fifty acres. According to USDA, that study, their study stopped, this is data from twenty-two. That's four years ago, pretty close. Six thousand one hundred and ninety-two acres per day in the United States are taken out of agriculture use. We're going down a slippery slope here. That computer, that data center, them solar panels, that wind turbines, ain't gonna put food on y'all's plates.
Amen.
We're the ones that do that, that have been on there six and seven generations. When that's gone, y'all have left the process, y'all have left that fake meat crap. That's all I can say. And they say hundred and fifty acres, we've got just in this general area, you've got twenty-six hundred acres solar out of Lysol, which those morons said eight thousand to begin with at the town hall meeting the other night, they didn't even know the figures. You've got twenty-six hundred there. You've got eight or nine thousand, it's not in this county, but it borders this county, down by Rock Creek. You've got another seven or eight thousand on Stevens, just trying to pick up. We don't have any figures on the ones that look. You add that up, that is more, that is a substantial amount of acreage in this county that is being lost. And you're never gonna get it back. Now, the all-grains, you wind farms, they can go back in there, you can go, once that construction's done, you can turn cattle out, you can do something. You can't farm it, you can graze cattle on it. Solar, that's done. By the time they pull that off in forty years or whatever, it's gonna look like this concrete right here, you won't ever grow anything on it. It'll be a salt skull, y'all have been in the oil field, look like a salt skull. All this whole green energy crap is not green. They keep pushing this, but the ones that are behind that are also in oil and gas, a lot of y'all are in oil and gas. What's building all of that stuff? What's building them wind turbines and solar? It's all fossil fuel that's building that. So the whole green deal is a totally separate misconception. We're fall, I mean, we're going down a slippery slope here of losing profitable, or productive land that we're never gonna get back. And that's my point, we're not trying to take anybody's land away from them. My right ends where your right begins. Progress is always a cost, there's always a cost for progress. And this is, this is getting into the dangerous part, in my opinion. I wanna thank all y'all for showing up at the town hall meeting the other night, though, that was very good. We need more of them, so we can do stuff like this in an open forum, and get y'alls. And next time, I would like for y'all to give your opinion and speak.
Exactly. Y'all are our protection, you're all we got.
We won't, we can't, we can't judge your, we can't judge y'all if y'all don't talk to us, and vice versa. And I've talked to several of y'all up there. They said, well, some people are for it, some are against it. Exactly, and I told y'all. Y'all are damned if you do, damned if you don't. But unless you take, unless you take, I mean, this group has got sixteen hundred and something signatures already.
In three weeks, not three months.
Is there another group out there that's doing, going to the opposite of it? No. So, that tells me which ones are the passionate ones about it, which ones are fighting for a cause. The other ones are, that ought to speak volumes to y'all. Is the who really cares, and who don't care. Everything on the other side is all about the money.
Hey, Judge, I'd like to say one more thing. Chris David cut me off.
Hold on, but I wanna just give one more minute before I leave. Texas Local Government Code two forty-five, Texas Local Government Code two forty-five is a statewide grandfathering clause. If you have a project that has been permitted, then you can't add regulations once they started working on it. It's designed to help protect, you know, protect developers, and people are doing work, so they're not halfway through a neighborhood, and then somebody says, we're gonna increase the setback, or something like that. But it's can be used to justify a lot of inaction by city councils.
We're not a city council.
I know, but that's where I'm going. So if you guys have a setup, and then they go to the city, and they've been permitted, city people who don't want to regulate and don't want to do any more, use that as an excuse for inaction. So you guys may be the last governing body that has any real say. And I know that your say is limited, right?
I meant to say, we, we don't have the ability to do setbacks and stuff like that.
No, no, Tom, but the cities who do, and cities that could implement a, the rules that regulate this organization, if they're talking about jumping into the city, getting ETJ so you can see services and all that, what they're gonna argue is, we've already got a permitted deal, you don't, we don't want any more regulations on it. So whatever you guys do, may be the last regulations they have to deal with, because city staff.
I'm just gonna ask you, what regulations can a county enact?
I thi, I think that simply demanding that they adhere to all of the standards the state requires, and usually it's, in counties that I've seen in Texas.
But they, they already have to adhere to everything the state, I mean, that, that, that already exists. What, what, what can we ask of them? What can we ask, if we, if we just say, you know, we're not gonna, we're not gonna talk to you, we're gonna just let you do, do, do your thing, we're not gonna, we're not gonna try to work with you in any way? What can we put on, on that?
I, I, I don't think you have to be antagonistic. But I'm, but I'm saying that, that any organization like this, they're gonna, they're gonna want roads widened. They're gonna want all the normal things that everybody wants. And if they're not gonna satisfy.
And that's all, I think all their roads are gonna be texted on roads, I don't think they have any county roads. So, I, I'm, I'm struggling to see where, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling, struggling to see what you're saying, how we can use it.
I, I, all I'm pointing out to you with this two forty-five, is that if somebody thinks, well, the city will regulate them, I'm saying that you should put zero hope into that.
But the city already has noise abatements, setback agreements, they already have ordinances that they would have to comply with if they went into the city. And they're forever, they're forever things, whereas anything we did would be temporary, because it would expire with any sort of agreement that we would have with them.
Hey, but you said earlier the abatements were how we would put restrictions on them.
That's what I'm talking about, those, but those abatements.
Yes, that would be great. So, so I think, I think what he's saying is, if you, if, Judge, if, if you, if you give them a deal, and the deal has no, no limits to anything they can do, they go to the city and then use two forty-five to say, this is our year, they can't make us do any of that.
And, and the city might, and the city might be able to, but they don't want to.
But they don't want to, at that point, because they have to fight that. But here's, here's the other thing with annexation, and this is, this is an important point to that woman's question. So, annexation, state regulates that the only people, you can only, the city can only annex the minute the landlord comes in and says, I wanna commit. So unless they have that deal, what he's talking about, that would be the only way that that would work to their benefit. So coming into the city, I'm not quite sure what that's all about, why they would wanna do that. But, the other question about the reinvestment zone, you can create a reinvestment zone, and there are other things that can go into that, that can be relevant change to keep that, because you create a new board, and that board can create those regulations.
I think you're thinking of a different.
Terms.
Yeah, this is different.
You can create a terms.
I see a lot of counties, I'm just gonna say, I see a lot of counties that work in a much more structured version than this, where they kind of tamp down the input, the repartee between the, the county, you guys allowing, and back and forth. It, it's, keep that as long as you can, it is standard for it. Thank you.
All right. Can I ask you a question? On that, on the terms, do we have to have, uh, county in our rules and regs for development? Do we have to have that, if, if we try to set the terms up? Do we have to have that in our statutes or anything?
You can create a terms, it's part of the legislation.
I mean.
I don't understand the question.
Okay. Uh, like, we have our rules and regulations for subdivisions.
Yes.
We set those so that we don't get ran over by a sub-developer wanting to come in and put in two hundred and fifty homes. They have to have their water, their electric, and all that. And you say we can set up a board on this, do we have to have that in our rules and regulations as the same way to do a terms?
The terms can be set up by the land, landlord can request that, to create a terms.
The landlord.
A landlord can. You can also, if someone wants to do it, it's part of the negotiation, you could make that part of the negotiation to do that. But the landlord can request that, we're gonna, we're gonna have that happen in all.
But we can't just throw it, we just can't enact the terms?
You can't just drop it in there.
Right, that's what I'm trying to get.
But that's a way, to answer her point, that's a way to create the regulations that you don't have the ability to create. Because the county can't do it, but that board can. The board that you would appoint, and the city would appoint, if they're part of it, they can create those regulations.
As long as, as long as the landlord comes to us or somebody that wants it involved.
As part of the negotiation.
Well, we have to negotiate.
You have to negotiate. This is all, this is all on who's coming, when, how big, and with what, and you don't know that yet. So, which is a start frame.
To everything, we just say the no to everything, we can't negotiate.
Correct.
So on that point, that's why I bring, I wanted to stand back up. On that point, you're saying that we're in the driver's seat, because we can put an abatement out there for all of our constituents, or for all, for all of these different companies, right? And so, uh, the conversation that I had with Judge Graham was, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, I've been known to be that. But, um, you, your conversation you and I had was, is that, I said, my question was, what do you think the data center is gonna come at you with? And he said, I can tell you what they're gonna come, they're gonna come at a hundred percent abatement. And then they'll distribute you to the schools and the hospitals, and something else, anyways.
Hospitals.
But then he said he would counteract, and he says, what I have been seeing, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I heard, you said, what I've seen most counties and data centers land on was eighty-twenty.
I said, well, I didn't say that's what I would counteract, I said, that's what. I said, that's what I have seen other, other communities land on.
But, but my point would be this, if we are the ones in the driver's seat, and we want constrict, uh, you know, we want restrictions, so we do go with a tax abatement, right? If you think that they're gonna come anyways, then why not do a twenty eighty opposite?
Yeah, I mean, we could, I mean, of course you wanna...
It's gotta be some percentage there, and I understand that. But what we're saying to you is, don't, don't give them, don't, and that's what I told you in your office, don't get stuck on the twenty percent. Yeah, I realize that's, that is a lot of money. But we're asking you, as commissioners and as the judge, don't get stuck on the small amount. You drive as hard as you can. If we have to have it, and I don't want it.
I don't want it.
I'm saying no, but if we have to have it.
The only reason to do a deal...
You drive as hard as you can.
Only reason to do a deal is if it's a good deal. That's the only reason.
Well, make it hard on them. Make them, make it where they come and deal with it.
Can, can you, can you promise this is, can you come to us? And we're not saying, I mean, it's gonna be hard to go to the whole camp, right? But can you at least come and say, all right, here's what the deal is on the title?
Yeah, so, so, the solar farm, the solar farms further along than this one. If, if, if we could reach an agreement with the solar farm, I will say publicly here that that agreement will be released to the public at least thirty days before that's voted on. So, everyone can read it, everyone can ask questions about it. We can all have a talk about it. You can have one-on-one talks, you can come to Commissioners Courts and talk about it.
But do you think that that's too late? Or will that give us time to say, no, you've, Scott's my commissioner?
Not too late, because that's not what it's voted, it's the thirty, at least thirty days before it's voted on.
But my, my point is, would that give us time to say to our commissioner, to you as a judge, no, please go further? Or is it too late?
No, no, it's not too late. I mean, I mean, it's, it's, it's not too late. It's a lot of time to talk.
Maybe you could come with our offers before the agreement? You know what I mean? You said, yeah, we have some agreement.
We'd have to do that. We'd have to have town hall meetings, and we have to present the, what we have to the people before we can vote. We're not gonna go vote on it behind your back and say, this is what we're getting. We're gonna let y'all understand and see the numbers, and see, this is what we're doing.
It's mandatory.
Do you wanna do it or not? It's not mandatory to release it.
It's not mandatory to have it before thirty, thirty days before you vote?
Not publicly. No, it's not. It should be, but it's not, it's not, that's not part of the law. Part of the law is that you have a public hearing and you discuss it there. So, in theory, some places could release it, you know, the day that they're voting on it.
Yeah, but public hearing, not thirty days and a half, gotcha?
Yes. What? I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the question.
If they're coming anyway, if solar or wind or data or whatever it is, if, if, if y'all know that they're coming anyway, then this county needs to have the reputation to all these big companies around the world. If you go to Young County, it's gonna cost you.
Yeah?
If you're, if you're coming anyway, you're not gonna get eighty twenty. You might get eighty twenty our way, but you're not gonna get eighty twenty your way.
You, yeah, I, I agree a hundred percent with what you just said. Hundred percent.
Through experience, if they're inviting you to play a game that you know nothing about, I mean, no offense, but they know every single rule. Um, that, there's, of all the turbines that were on the sites, the people's property, that they had, the owner of the land had the right to, uh, you know, set the terms. Of all of them, there was only one that protected his brother and his future generations of them. They will take what they can, and they will bury you in so much paperwork. I've seen it, I've had the wild paperwork about stuff to OSHA, to EPA. I've done it, been there, I don't like the fact that I was there. But I've seen it, and I'm trying to give you all a cautionary tale. They are inviting you into something that they know every no, cranny, and crevice about.
That's why we don't trust in ourselves. We hire people to help us.
So, I mean, like...
Who do we hire?
What's that?
Who do you hire?
For the data center?
Either one.
For the solar farm?
You said the solar farm was further along.
Solar farm, we hired Jeff Snowden, who's a consultant, who's done eighty or so solar farm deals. He's South Texas, um, what's the name of the town he's from?
It doesn't matter.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I...
So, then I should be able to get a copy of the things that we're requesting and stipulations that we've met?
It's not available yet. It's gonna, we're gonna, if we can get, if we can get something, you know, kind of negotiated further along, then we're gonna release it.
No, I'm not asking what they're agreeing to. I'm asking about what we're saying that we won't give up.
Oh, oh, well, I mean, I'll tell you what we're asking for. We're asking for setbacks, we're asking for money for volunteer fire departments, we're asking for money for the sheriff's department to, to, um, be able to better patrol the area during, during the construction phase. We're asking for road reimbursements for, for roads that get damaged, both county roads and for texted on roads. Um, we're asking for a lot of protections.
Okay, have you done, have you asked for an EPA study on how it's gonna affect runoff water and stuff?
We asked for an environmental study, which has been filed with the county clerk's office. We, we received what they've asked so far. The, the, I don't, if they've done, I don't know if they've done the EPA study, but the EPA is gonna require all kinds of reports and studies from them.
But that's only if it's requested, though, right?
No, I think they require those.
Because I don't think all of that is required. I think you have to request it. Some of it you have to request.
From the county?
No, from the EPA. I know, I thought y'all didn't know anything about the solar. They didn't know about the One Lovin'. This is the One Lovin'.
Yeah, we're talking about a life field.
Okay.
We're talking about a different product.
Okay, is this the same, is this the same company that's looking at, uh, the Indian mound area or the FM seven sixty-nine?
I don't think so, but I don't know who's doing it.
No, it isn't.
They said they were. They said this was the only project they were doing. Okay.
The one towards us is Catalyst Energy that has the least bottom.
So, we're not gonna do anything with it until we get it going?
Pretty much.
I, I don't, I don't even know who to talk to.
But can we put in?
Oh, don't tell me that.
Well, why do you, how would, what, why do you think I know who they are?
They've already made agreements with RBS Investments. How do you not know who to talk to?
Who is RBS?
Or, Paige, RBS.
Who's RBS?
Stevens.
Bruce Stevens.
Okay, I, I, Bruce doesn't tell me...
And so, if they're making agreements and you don't know who they are...
How would I know what deal Bruce did with them?
Because you could ask, they know.
I, yeah, I guess. How can we find out this information and y'all not know? And you don't know where to look?
Thank you.
How do we, how do we, as little peons, can find this stuff out?
This is a rear back yard, and all...
Have they approached you for a solar lease? Or have they approached one of your neighbors that have told you about it? Nope, they haven't. But what's interesting, you say you have no plan. And I mentioned that earlier. We don't have a plan because we haven't been approached with anything. Yeah? What's interesting is, the high school football team develops a plan to play the, the opposing football team every Friday night or through that whole week. You know, if you don't know as much as we do, I would say, hey, maybe ask some of them to help you. Hey, Travis, can I ask you a question? My name is not Travis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's him, he's better than...
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Cooper.
Cooper?
Yeah.
So, the high school, they develop a plan, they have a game scheduled, right?
They do.
We don't have game schedules yet.
You obviously do, because you're, we're talking about it right now. You obviously know these things are trying to come to your county.
Okay, you're talking about...
And you can...
We don't know who they are.
You could, it, it doesn't matter. You know what they're wanting to do to your county, correct? You know exactly what their endgame is, to build data centers, to build solar farms. It's not very complicated to at least extrapolate in your mind what you think about these things. How do we move forward? Maybe let's talk to some people who have learned a lot. And I don't know a lot about it, there's people in this crowd that do. Have them come in and talk to you.
How we handle the solar farm is we...
If you say you have no plan, yet you already gave us a little bit of a plan. So, which is, do you have a plan or do you not have a plan? And I'd like to know, what is it? When they approach us, they have, they, 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 they will, at some point, they formally approach with a plan. And what we did with, with the, with the solar farm that we're currently talking to them about is we hired a consultant. We hired someone who's been a part of eighty-plus solar farm deals. And we tell them what we want, what, what, you know, what kind of protections we want, what kind of, what, what are we concerned about? And we try, you know, if we're gonna do a deal, we gotta make sure that they address those concerns. What are your, kind of? So, what are some, what are some of the concerns? Obviously, we wanna have setbacks, we wanna have property setbacks. We wanna have assurances that, that, that the noise is gonna be regulated at a, at a level that, that's, that's an acceptable level. We wanna have, um, you know, we wanna have, we wanna have protections that we're gonna be able to, to, to have, you know, be reimbursed for the extra patrols we're gonna need to have in the area to, to make sure that, that, you know, the traffic's safe and, and people are safe. We wanna find, we wanna have protections that if they tear up roads, that they're gonna, that those, that those roads are gonna be able to be fixed back and replaced. I mean, there's a lot of protections that we want to build, to, to have. And, and without any of those productions, protections, there's no point dealing with them. But without talking to them, you can't protect yourself. So, y'all have not thought about ways to protect us other than what you've just spoken about? I mean, what, you obviously, you obviously, you obviously know our personal belief in, in the particular situation. Have, have any of y'all told us what you, and you're not elected to enact your personal will upon us. You are enacted, elected to represent our will, correct? Yes. Okay. But however, I would still like to know, what is your personal belief? Do you want them, do you not? I, I'm sure a lot of us would really like to know that. Do we want them, or do we want them, or do you not want them? I am not, I am not here recruiting them. I don't go out and recruit these sort of...
That's not an answer to the question.
I, I, in a perfect world?
Yes, no.
No, you don't want them here. But if they're coming... We're don't live in a perfect world. Right. Do you want or not? Do I want solar farms? Do you want solar farms? Do you want data centers? Yes or no? I... In your county, do you want them in your county? I just wanna know. I wanna be open to any...
Legitimate business. What I, what I'm hearing is, everybody in here does, doesn't want solar, wind, or data center, correct? Everyone got it.
You got it.
Okay. Okay, let me ask you this. I have not heard an alternative to what's gonna happen in the next ten, fifteen, thirty years down the road.
Manufacturing.
They're gone.
Manufacturing.
Okay. Do you, do you believe...
Hey, hey, hey. Time. I ask a question. What, what is it that y'all have to replace what was, what's trying to come? Because I'm gonna ask you another question. For years, since I've been on the court, all I've asked, people come to me, Jim, what can we do to lower our tax rate? And Sean, I apologize for not getting back to you at a time of the matter. Everybody come to me and said, what can we do to lower our tax rate? I said, get industry in here. That's the only thing that will lower our tax rate. The only thing. I've never seen something come to us with such a small footprint that will bring such a big amount of money as what a data center gets.
You're misrepresenting.
No, no.
You're misrepresenting.
No, ma'am, I'm not representing them. No, I'm not. When you're talking billions of dollars, that will have an effect on your tax rate.
You said small footprint, what does that mean?
That's something you can't put a dollar sign on, and when that industry comes in, that changes everything, Jimmy.
Let me ask you this. Our poor fellows before we came sacrificed a lot to get to where we're at today. Did they not?
Absolutely.
They didn't, they sacrificed not only their lives, but other things, so that we would have a better way of life.
Yes.
Okay? At some point, we're gonna have to sacrifice something.
Absolutely.
So, our kids and our grandkids would have a better way of life. Because I promise you this, let me finish. I promise you this, if we don't have other things come into our community that would generate enough cash flow to help take care of what we've got wrong with us, there won't be a future.
I agree with you.
But there, there are other industries that are not as invasive as this.
Okay, but why aren't they coming?
We are, we got people looking and talking to some.
Absolutely. I can do it for twenty years.
There are people talking about natural gas power plants. That's, that's our, that's...
Here?
Yes.
Okay. Do you know what?
No, no, not in that, people talking about trying to bring one of them.
Yeah, and so, so we've been...
There are things.
I've been involved for the last twenty-s odd years trying to recruit manufacturing to Young County. So, why, why, why haven't we been able to succeed? Well, there's several reasons. One, we're not on a major highway. Most of the manufacturing places wanna be on a major highway. We're a little bit too far away from DFW. They'd rather be closer to the metroplex. We've got substandard fiber in Young County, and we have no rail. So, those things right there, one of those things has killed us on every type of manufacturing job that we've tried to bring in here.
Well, we have trucks and highways, Hexel and GMI, Walmart shipping.
Hexel and GMI are gone.
Yeah, but they were...
Gone.
We need that kind.
Abs, I agree a hundred percent.
We agree with you a hundred percent.
And we're able to truck them.
Why are many of them trying to go?
So, so, if you're gonna give incentives, are you offering incentives that kind?
We welcome them.
Hundred percent.
Absolutely.
As, as, every community in the state of Texas is offering incentives to, to companies like that. So, why would they come here when they have so many disadvantage? I'm sorry for a second. Why would you come here when there's so many disadvantages, when they can get the exact same incentives and have those advantages? That's the problem that we have in recruiting manufacturing here.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna stake drive.
We'll share them. We'll... Can I answer your question? I completely agree with you about making a sacrifice for our future generations. It's like the old tale about somebody planting a tree, who, neighbor themselves get to appreciate the shake. The thing, the different thing is, we're sacrificing the sustainability of this land around here and taking that from our future generations.
Yeah.
We're sacrificing something that's not ours. But the landlord is doing that sacrifice to himself, okay? Y'all be with him. That's, that's his, that's his priority. That's his priority. It is, it is. Okay? But maybe he's thinking the same thing on sustainability. I haven't been there. But we don't know that. I do know that. We do. I, I, the wind turbines, I've been a specialist, I've actually written a book on how those damn things are wired up. They have a maximum life expectancy of forty years, maximum. And how long is that land gonna be here? But you know what? Let's say that that data center only lasts fifty years or forty years.
Lasts five years.
Twenty.
You think it'll last twenty?
Maybe.
Okay, if it lasts thirty years, how much of that's, how much of that already helps us to get further down the road than what we're in right now?
You know what, honestly, I'd rather pay more taxes now and have my kids be able to appreciate a beautiful landscape and clean dirt and water.
Yeah, you got more in the hunt when you're, when you're half a mile from it.
You, you say that, they're not on it. It doesn't make them notice at all. The only time, the only time it would make noise is if those things were gonna like to kick off for a few minutes.
We don't have a plan, how can you get?
About for ten years when the bulldozers were running and sand pulling out of the south. And, and you're a quarter of a mile.
What's, what's the difference?
That's a sacrifice that you're probably not willing to kill.
Do, y'all remember when we had the blackouts?
Come by my house then.
I was. Y'all remember when we had the blackouts back in two thousand and ten?
Yes.
Okay, you got a power plant up here, run out of steam, you can't operate water on frozen water, right? Uh, hydroelectric plant when the water's low. Every one, single one of those turbines was down, down there.
Okay, we're not talking about wind farms.
No, I'm telling you a cautionary tale. It's, I mean, I could give you a fable from childhood, like a little boy who cried wolf. It's a cautionary tale. They're going to sing the praises, every, all sixty of those turbines on that side were down. The only way to get them back up was to bypass the safety regulation and have iron mill one to start them rotating with ice on the plate. If you've ever seen a hundred and fifty-foot chunk of ice getting slung and oil spilling everywhere, and you have to do it on, and they, that's what I'm saying. The stuff that is not even in the print, they're gonna bury it and bury it and bury it and bury it. The people selling this song and dance to you, they're not gonna tell you the ins and outs. That's gonna be left up to the guys that work on it every day that's gonna fall to it. It's like, oh, well.
We didn't know he did that.
But.
You've been waiting very patiently, please.
To keep everything simple, but basically what we're saying is, we don't want to go to Garland and, and see these buildings. And we definitely don't want to have them here where we have to experience them every day in our lives. Whether it's a data center, a solar farm, or a wind farm. We don't wanna deal with it daily where we live in.
Okay, okay, but. Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, my name's Bill Eishen. Uh, did you not say in one of the previous commissioners' courts that Tapaderos gave the county twenty thousand dollars to hire a consultant?
They did.
And what's the results of the consultant, and who chose the consultant?
So they gave us the twenty thousand dollars, we hired the consultant, we chose the consultant.
You chose it?
And we hired him, yes. So they're gonna give Young County the money, and then Young County will then pay the consultant the money.
How was the consultant chosen?
How was it consulted?
It, it seems suspicious to me that a company that wants to come in and bill.
We, 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 we found him, interviewed him, I, I wanna say interviewed ten, fifteen consultants before we hired this one.
Have you got any results back from them?
Um, well, no, we haven't finalized the deal yet, but yes, I talk to them, I talk to them every week.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, we're, yes, I mean, we're, we're getting results, but no, do we have a final product? Absolutely not.
Yeah.
Were the ones that you interviewed recommended by the captain?
No, they didn't recommend any of them. What I did was I called, um, I called county judges across the, across the state and asked them, you know, who, what attorneys or consultants that they've worked with, and what their opinions were, and then I got a list of, of attorneys and consultants that, that I got a, from, I got positive recommendations from, and then I called and interviewed them myself.
Would it not make sense before going further down the line to hire a consultant to look at this data farm situation? Why would we wait until they just decided, hey, we're gonna, here's our plan, and we'll move it in, and then find a consultant?
Well, I, I started, as far as hiring somebody.
Yeah.
Um, I've, I don't know if that makes sense to, to, to expend money like that, but I've been interviewing people trying to, in anticipation of this process, I've been interviewing people to try to figure out who we want to hire. Because the guy that we used on the solar farm, he's, he's done some data centers, but there might be, there might be better people out there to use going forward. So, I, I am looking for somebody, but I have not hired anybody yet.
Okay.
And they're expensive, so I'm not, I, I kinda not sure I wanna hire one till I know we're actually gonna take that.
When you're talking about expensive, how expensive are you talking about?
For the data center?
Yeah, if you wanted to hire.
You know, and it's the.
What would be the retainer fee to hire one?
I, you know, some, some are, some are flat fee, but most are hourly, so that's gonna be a question of how long that process, and I don't, I don't know yet.
Well, to open another can of worms, you got budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the plastic gazebo.
Yeah.
Would that money not be better spent looking at a consultant than a gazebo?
My, my guess is the gazebo's not gonna have that. And it, it, no one's, no one's, no one has made a motion to accept it.
It is in the budget, correct?
We, we budgeted for the gazebo, yes. And, I mean, that could be, and there's a lot of places, I, I think the sheriff would like that money invested in his jail to fix it up. I mean, there's a lot of places that that money could go, but you're right, that money, our money, money, there is money available, I guess, for there, but I, um. We, we.
We should be hiring some kind of consultant.
We will get some help, I promise you.
Consulting to look at the status and, and so, I want to speak.
Hang on, you got, you can.
Judge Freeman's gene type, it's a little late now, but he gave his name, if we could have everybody give, give their name, I think that would be good.
It would be great, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Has anybody signed a piece of paper that you saw back there?
I already signed it. I'm Phil Denny, sixth generation in Young County. So, couple of different subjects I wanna cover is, one is the solar farm. So, they told us after the period, the meeting that we had, that, uh, the solar farm was not started yet. But we know, and they told us they're already building roads out there, so technically, it has been started. They've already got equipment out there, they're already working on it, and they know they're gonna do it, and they said it was only gonna look at upper down the priority ladder of about six projects. So.
That's not, that's not what I heard them say.
Okay.
I heard them say that they built a road, and that was part of the contractual obligation they had with the landowner for them to do, when they were doing their studies, that they had to have a road built.
I, I heard the plural, roads, but anyway.
Okay.
I, whatever you say, I don't know. That's fine, but, you know, to give them a tax abatement when they've already made all these land deals and stuff out there, doesn't seem like it makes sense to me. And, and you can argue whatever, I'll just go on to the next subject. So, one other thing I want, and now I'm gonna change it to the data center. I, I was in on the so-called individual private meetings, and four of our group met with Datastream, and they also call themselves Headwaters. There's, uh, I think, five of them, plus, uh, the other two.
Two related companies.
Very. So, one of the questions I asked was, have you done studies such as EPA, wildlife, and traffic studies? So, the one guy sitting right in front of me, the young man that's tall, that's slim, I don't know who I'm talking about, he said, no, we have not. So, the guy that couldn't speak Texan was from Ireland, I heard, but he was, he was making, he was answering most of the questions. He turned around and said, yes, we have done studies. So the two of them, one of them, one of them were lying. And then, uh, a lady with our group, Anna, asked, said, have you released those studies yet? And he said, no. So, we got two different things coming out of the same mouth, so don't trust them, is one thing I gotta say. The other thing I wanna switch to is the construction side, Harry touched on this a little bit. But I want the citizens of Graham and Young County to understand how many millions of tons of rock are gonna come down Elm Street and create a lot more traffic for rock haulers than what we have right now. They're gonna be going out two oh nine and FM sixty-one all day long. And the people that live out of sixty-one and two oh nine will not be able to get out of their driveways. They're gonna be, the construction side of this, they said, might last twelve years or fifteen years, depending on what they sell, what, you know, who they sell it to, they said they don't have a tenant yet. And so, they won't give specific answers to any of this until they sell it to a tenant, so we don't know, you know, when that's gonna be. Yeah. So, the construction side out there, they're gonna have hundred thousand pound bulldozers and excavators pounding on that rock out there. They're gonna have diesel fumes flying everywhere. The place over at Adling, which I know is a little bit different from what we're talking about here, it's bigger, I know that. They have sixty-five hundred to eight thousand employees working on that side out there, and the traffic going in and out of there is unbelievable. When these people start coming in during the construction side, and they said they'd have a thousand to two thousand employees, I believe is what I heard, correct me if that's wrong? So, how are those guys gonna get out there? They're gonna be coming down FM sixty-one where all that light, light road traffic, the country club traffic, and all the other people that live down FM sixty-one are trying to get down their highway. They're working on it right now. And this morning, it took me fifteen minutes to get back on after I went to eat breakfast this morning, and sitting there at a light because they're repaving the highway. But the construction side of this, in my opinion, kills everything. The abatements, it's not good, in, in my opinion, on anything. I'd rather pay the taxes I'm paying now. I get the same, I get the services that I want right now out of the county, everybody in my precinct, the, the roads seem fine. I'm not complaining about my taxes, nobody likes to pay property taxes. And so, I asked the one guy in the meeting with Datastream, the little Irishman, I said, you know, what are you gonna pay me for my house when you start building that thing? You know, are you gonna pay me, it's gonna lose fifty percent of its value, probably? And his statement was, well, I've actually seen people's house, houses increase in value that goes to a data center. Now, if you believe that one, I've got some property I wanna sell, you have a question. So, there's devil in the details. The details are really important about all of this, and we need to check into that ahead of time. And we didn't know what the devil, devil is in the details, and.
I agree with that.
One, one of our presidents once said that it depends on what the definition of is, is. And so, I say that solar farm out there is already under construction, they can name it anything they want to, and they can say, oh, we're just working on a few roads, but they've already started construction, don't give them an abatement at all. Thank you.
I'm about to deal from one of my constituents. Uh, he asked me to read it here in court today. Uh, Doug Robertson, he lives out on Rocky Mountain Road. He said, uh, I won't, he won't be able to come to the meeting today at nine thirty. I would like brought up about the data center controversy and the solar, uh, issues of an abatement he is against in any reason. Uh, it's a business, it should be able to stand on its own. If it has to have a tax abatement, so far as any concerned, as I'm concerned, we don't need it. Uh, this is Doug Robertson. Uh, I count on you to represent me. I promised him I'd read this here today. So I wanna read it out. I do not have a problem with no to all this. I do not. But I do have a problem with letting them, if they come anyway, and we don't have any guidance that we can get on. That is my only problem with not having any type of abatement.
So, one thing I, I.
Other than the EPA or what?
It's a disaster if they come.
So.
Either way.
Either way.
But you can't stop them.
That's the thing. You guys admit it's a disaster. Lowballing, they stand around here, that's.
Two of it.
Lowballing.
Yeah, all right, go ahead, you, you've been waiting, you've been, you've been. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm basically, basically waiting.
I, uh, I wasn't gonna say anything today, but Wiley brought up something that, number one, I think it's, it's actually about a point about the sacrifices our forefathers made, right? My family's been here for, for, forever. But at the same time, um, most of you guys know, I mean, my degree is in finance and economics, and I've spent quite a bit of time consulting across the United States, including for power companies. Um, I had a third in the United States under my project for critical infrastructure protection. There's something with these data centers that I don't think we're actually looking at, and when, to your point, if they're coming, they're coming, but it doesn't mitigate that risk. Whenever we sit down and we look at a data center, the first thing that I see, having had some, uh, exposure to this, is that it is a single industry, and it's, it's exposed to the risk of that one industry. So, if they get in a client, say their client's Google or OpenAI, whoever, at the point in time that you do that, if their tenants and that industry go down, that, that data center, its revenue stream is affected as well, because it's so concentrated in the one industry. Now, the other aspect of it is that with those two hundred jobs, we all know that there are very, very few people that have the expertise to go work in that. Part of the burn that a lot of people have right now is that when that thing comes in, we hear, you know, two hundred jobs or, or however many, those higher-paying jobs won't be coming to citizens of Graham. It may be people that come into Graham, but the data center actually somewhat strands the people here that probably don't have skills, that need skills. They still, they're still left without a job unless they're doing security or janitorial or something like that. That doesn't contribute to the well-being of the next generations. It strands them. And that's what a lot of people are, are beginning to see and figure out with this whole deal. We've got an inordinate market exposure with an industry that is extremely laden with debt. So they've got that extra exposure as well. Now, while I agree with your point, yes, we do need manufacturing here, without a doubt. However, in order to do that, perhaps maybe we should actually pull up into the supply chain instead of looking at the end result, the, the end company, actually get manufacturers in here that would need, uh, semi-skilled labor. Take the people that we have, train them, and let them work there, kinda like, as you said, GMI and, and Hexel are gone, but that doesn't mean we can't bring in somebody else like that. You know, we've got an industrial park out there that's just kinda sitting.
Yeah, and, and actively recruiting people for it.
I understand, I understand, and I, and.
It's easier said than done to recruit manufacturing here.
As somebody who owns a manufacturing business, I, I totally, it's, it's hard.
Yeah.
It's, in some ways, it's a catch twenty-two, and I'm sympathetic towards that. But when I, when I take a step back and look at the data center and the solar farms, and we start talking about twenty-five-year abatements, then all of a sudden, I'm starting to look, and, what's that?
There is no such thing as a twenty-five-year economic end term.
Hundred percent aware of that.
But that's their offer, they told us that.
String told us that.
They told us.
But they can't get that because the state doesn't allow.
But that's where the number came from, so there you go.
But there, there are, there are ways that you can slide, you can defer abatements, right?
They have to re-bank for another.
It's kinda the tenures keeps moving to different prices.
Exactly. But my, my point with that is, is that whenever you start looking in it, into this, where do, when, when those abatements hit, who's gonna pay for the increase in services and everything else? String can tell us that, okay? And, uh, uh, the guys that are building Tapaderos can do the same thing. But at the end of the day, if those costs, which I haven't seen what our anticipated input costs from the county and the city are, eventually those things, because of the abatement, and the, the revenue that doesn't come because an abatement is in place, at that point in time, we then have to figure out where the cost is gonna come from in the city. And so we're left with two choices. Not meet the, not meet the demand, the requirement, or increase taxes in some form or fashion because the abatement is in place. Now, when I understand what you're saying, that that abatement is important to kinda hold our feet to the fire.
Yeah.
I get it. But what, what I have not heard anybody talk about is if they, a significant abatement is put in place so that we can kinda really hold our feet to the fire, as you're saying, where is that extra revenue going to come from for the essential services and everything else? If we're not employing people here that need jobs, then we don't have the sales tax revenue and everything else that come from increased spending. It's called marginal propensity to consume. And until we have that, we still, we're still looking at a hole, even if you bring them in. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and, and that, and that, everything you're saying makes a ton of sense, and you're gonna, or, before you would offer them an abatement, you would, you would do that analysis, you would have these consultants and people that would help you analyze all that to try to figure out what the, what the cost on, what the cost on the community will be, and you try to, you know, you build a, you build a deal that protects yourself for that.
Exactly.
And, and, and the jobs, you know, there are preceptible type jobs, there, there's everything from the security guard that you were talking about, to electricians, to, uh, data consultants. There's a, there's a guy in Alney who, um, is a Alney High School grad, and drives ninety minutes to a hundred and twenty minutes every day to his data center job in the metroplex, and he's a high school, Alney High School grad, didn't go to college. Um, you know, you can, you know, the, the fact that we can't serve, work in these data centers is false. We can, we can, through NCTC, through Alney High School, through Graham High School, we can, we can create jobs for our local, our local people.
But those things take time.
Well, everything takes, yeah, everything takes time.
The thing that I would say is, is kinda the burn here is that we're not hearing, okay, we're going on this path, we're looking at the follow-on effects like I talked about, right? Just, hey, this is, this is what the, the, the follow-on effects of an abatement would be. We know that we would have to have these services, we just, are you guys looking into that and trying to figure out?
We're still learning all this. We're still figuring it out, we're, I mean, no one's offered an abatement, no one's asked for an abatement.
Okay.
We're, I, but it's, you know it's coming.
A hundred percent.
I mean, you know it's coming.
Yeah.
So, we're still in the learning phase of this, just like y'all are. So we're still in the learning phase of this, just like y'all.
Yes, sir. Hey Travis, what you just talked about, we've already thought about that. We talked about that before we ever heard this data deal. It's a process and a problem we've got in our state right now across the country of the, of the common laborer, whether you're an electrician, whether you're a plumber, whether you're a mechanic, whether you're an IT person or whatever. And that's something we talked to Stream about when we went down there to meet with them, about taking and utilizing our high school, upper grades, and also our college, about implementing. They're doing the same thing right now with Texas State Technical Institute or whatever.
NTCT.
NTCT, whatever it's called, but they're doing that right now. Because they see the same problem. They see that they got to grow the future, people that helps do what they do. There's not a whole lot of people in the world does that kind of stuff. It's like what you said, but that's what they're doing. The people, I talked to a guy Saturday that's from Abilene, Texas, and he said their economy is unbelievable for the amount of people that's there. And I'm talking about sales tax and stuff like that, places where they eat and all this other stuff. Y'all don't, and he said, I don't hear a bunch of people complaining about it. But what they're doing too on yours deal is they're taking buses, big buses, and they're transporting people out there in buses.
That's because they got eight thousand buses.
Sending a bunch of cars going out there, which, which lowers the traffic.
Right.
Population down. There's things to mitigate in all of this deal. Once we figure out all the ins and outs of all this, when they're going to come and what they're going to do, there's all kinds of different ways to mitigate this deal.
Fair enough. The, the one comment, excuse me, that I would, that I would also make, and it's, it's just a fear of mine because I've seen this before, is when an industry comes in, and say we get two thousand employees for ten years. Truly, we do have an, an economic boom potentially with that, but when they leave, you've got the backside of it. I mean, we all remember, you know, the oil bust and things like that.
We've, we've lived that.
And then all of a sudden, what do you do with the people that built a business, you know, and ten years later, they're broke? We could actually find ourselves in a situation where we're worse off on the backside of it than we were now. Because of people, you know, just the investment, bringing investment in to meet the demand. And then when that demand drops out because it was two thousand people plus leave, then all of a sudden, where you left. So if, one thing I would say with that for y'all, take time to consider that because most of y'all are old enough to remember what happened in the eighties. Right?
Yeah, I knew those intervals, but I don't know.
All right, thank you.
So I, I want to make a couple of points right away. So we've, uh, we've established that they're going to give us money, but the thing that I want to point out is money isn't everything. And to me, the taxes are just as, are less evil than having our community invaded. So I don't trust these people. And the other thing I want to ask you is, and I, all of you, one, one thing I want to ask you, I want to challenge you, each one of you, every one of you, every one of you, to disrupt Google or look at the backside, look at the negative part. Google negatives to data centers, solar farms, et cetera, et cetera, and see what all it says. And you can find a lot of that information online on Facebook. And I hate Facebook personally, but there's a data center website that people have posted.
You know where Facebook lives? In a data center.
Yeah. And so
The necessary evil or something.
I mean, well, it's either, you see, you see. Google's been around long before all these data centers started, my friend.
It's either do that or don't, go with our phones and our computers and everything else.
Go back to the old way.
Go back to the number two pencil.
They're making the kids give up their cell phones in school and they're doing better. So we can do without it. We can go to the library and look stuff up.
I don't, I don't look, I don't look at Facebook.
But another question I want to ask you, and so this is a legitimate point, especially with the solar farm out there. That company said they've been in business since twenty twenty-two. What a track record, maybe three years or less. So they said, oh, we're going to buy a bond to cover anything that we promise you that, that we don't do, this, it'll be covered by a bond. Well, who's going to own the bonding company? Is it a shell company that they're going to create?
The bond, the bond comes from Texas State law and it's regulated through the state of Texas, so I mean.
But bonding companies can go out of business just like anybody can.
Everybody can.
They can, they can file bankruptcy. We've seen booms and busts, we've seen the dot com boom and bust, and we've seen the home crisis, the oil field, there's lots of things that can go up and down. If those companies go out of business and the bonding company goes out of business, we're left with a data center or whatever it is, it's going to be seventeen buildings out there just covering up the land and we got to clean it up. The county taxpayers have to clean it up. One other point, I've been engaging people, I've been following this crap for a couple of months now. So I've been engaging people as I went around the community in about four or five different businesses. And out of probably thirty to forty people that I've approached and asked to sign the petition, so only one objective. So be aware of what your constituents are thinking because that gave me a pretty good idea that ninety-five percent of the people that I just talked to and ran into that I knew at the grocery store or wherever, that they are against this from the get-go. So that's all I have to say.
Let's do one more and then we've got other people that are here that, that are actually agenda items that we need to hear from, but you, you've been very patient.
Thank you. Guys, I think you know, why did I move here to Graham? Twenty-three years ago this month. And the reason was because we wanted to get out of the city. We were going to wait till we retired and then we decided because we were in the tech industry, we could do it here. That was before it was cool, right? Well, we came out here, one of my first meetings at the Chamber of Commerce was Bruce Street. Bruce invited me, and this is not our president, this was ninety-year-old Bruce Street. And he invited me to go around and ride for that day to look at Graham because he was so proud of Graham. And I remember talking about, I knew that the monies from the Graham families, the Street families, the Stubbs, the other families that had founded this place, made money in oil and gas, and they put a lot of it back into and still do some. So, um, I, I told him how much I admired what the families did here because they cared about this community. And that was one thing that attracted us here. The, the Veterans Memorial was major. It tells a story that this country cares about America and about its people, and you don't forget them. So, um, that day I told Bruce Street, I said, you know, I'm, I'm aware of how generous the families have been here and why this community is here like it is. And he, he looked at me and he said, you know what, it's been a lot of fun making the money, but it was a whole lot more fun giving it away. And I respected that so much because that's really the way it sounds. So I'm going to move it from y'all's problem of making the money and getting the tax. Um, we, he, another thing that Bruce said to me was, he was so interested, what was my job? What did I do? What was Wayne involved in? What was his job? And he looked at me and said, so you two have your business, you come here, but you don't need our resources, but you bring your money back here. I said, yeah. He said, that's what we need in this town. And there have been a few others like ourselves that were tech and they came here and they were able to continue doing their work. We continued working here ten, fifteen years or so before we retired. Um, the idea was too, that I think he had an idea before his time, people in the city aren't going to quit moving here, I promise you. Um, the people that live here now, I'll, I'll be there soon, unfortunately, we're going to be moving back toward that way. But I, I would have to move if this type of construction started. We live at the west side of Lake Graham, we look over there, and I could be a knot in my backyard. I, it's literally across the lake in my backyard, you're on the golf course, you see our house, and, um, I don't want to look at it. But more than that, the construction issues would run us out. Um, anyone that has asthma is going to be horrible. Uh, you know, anyone that has major, there's a lot of major diseases, a lot of, I mean, it's going to really impact hundreds and hundreds of people out there. The construction, but also then we get to the data center. And you know, when you say, um, the sound is not going to be bad, you know what worries me more than the sound? It's the vibrations I don't hear. Because I know Clint Young had sent a note up here saying that, because he just moved to Granbury, I think it was. And he said, um, the people there were so unhappy. He said, there are people that are having problems with their eyes. He's had some neighbors, there were cardiac problems. And when you look at it, and if you ever, you go back and research the Havana syndrome, that, you remember that? Uh, it was during our time. Look up Havana syndrome. And it was in Cuba, uh, probably under Obama, if you remember. Um, and the, the sound waves were directed toward our consul, our consulate. Yeah, you see, toward all of our CIA, the Cubans were doing, our Russians were there doing. And that, there's a lot of research that went on about the sound waves. You know, we hear at, um, what is our hearing is, uh, eighty, that's eighty hertz, I think it's eighty hertz. And if you go below that, dogs and all those can hear it. We don't hear it. It's a, it's called a fear frequency, um, sound. If you look up some of that, have some good questions to ask about those sounds. Because I remember something early on in this, and that's when I started looking at it. It talked about, um, how old age, they would use a certain sound that you didn't really hear. It was the tone and the, and the hertz that they used in music to instill fear in you. That's one of the things that come from some of those in Granbury. So I'm bringing it back, I know you got, we got tax problems, money problems, but if you start making people really ill, like Granbury, some of those are, are reporting, uh, you've got a whole other set of problems going on. And, um, if that, you know, you've got Conorshire here, you've got, uh, the honeybee people, what was it, Beemore Farms, I don't know if they're here. He's traveling to California all the time. But they moved here, he bought a place and they were starting Beemore. And then come to find out they're right by the lot that, um, the hydrogen plant was going to, which may be infamous. You've got people with some big money that are moving in here that the word will get out and they can leave in a moment. But you talk about the time span that it takes for that to, to get our kids up and where they're going. Um, there's, there's some problems that will be brought on by, and I just think those things need to be looked into real closely.
Thank you. You want to take a five-minute bathroom break and then we can get, move on to some of the business on this agenda.
Thank you all so much.
Appreciate it. Now, I, this is, we are at the beginning stages of this, so this is, this is great to have.
Thank you all.
I appreciate it. I appreciate your feedback. Are you with the newspaper?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be rude.
You were not reading all.
I just want to ask you a question. Okay. Oh, wait. Yeah, okay, okay. Coming in the first century.
No.
All in rules. Okay. All right. Where are you moving from?
I'm from Dethno originally.
Okay. My daughter graduated from UNT.
Did she really? Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Glad you're here.
Awesome. Nice to meet you.
All right, see you later.
Yeah, they'll be in touch too, like, I just didn't talk to them all and stuff, so. Thank you. Usually, yes, one of us is.
Yeah, that's right. Blowing up Tanner.
Getting a phone chat? Okay, a phone chat. Signed up yet? Get a couple there first, don't you?
Can you ride your motorcycle, Bill?
Too cold, man.
That's what I thought.
Well, I, I turned seventy-six years old in the middle of September.
Mm-hmm.
Three days after my Medicare exam. Felt like I was passing a kidney stone.
Mm-hmm.
So I went to the emergency room about a half a dozen different times in the hospital. Well, wait, they put me on a catheter for nineteen freaking days.
Kidney problems?
Yeah, and then they finally put a stent in there between the kidney and the bladder.
That makes it sound like a motorcycle.
Moved the stent last Wednesday. And Friday I was having symptoms that were on the give-out sheet. On the Friday, which I'll pause it there, it was an analysis, blood work, and an ultrasound. Now I'm taking ten days worth of antibiotics for kidney infections. You know, I don't know, it hasn't been a good two months, something like that.
I have a Harley, but I bet you I haven't rode it three hundred miles in the last five years.
We got a Harley.
Did you?
I had a sixty-four Bandit, that was my second.
Oh, that's, I wonder if that's old.
I started riding around nineteen seventy-seven.
My first motorcycle was in a nineteen seventy-one two-eight fifty Honda.
Yeah. Yeah, I started on a little Honda.
Yeah.
And then, I'll tell you, I paid nine hundred dollars, nine hundred dollars for a sixty-four Bandit.
Oh, really? Oh, really?
I sold it for that, a lot of dollars, though. Yeah, it's probably worth about a hundred thousand.
I've always had a lot of dirt bikes, but I've always had motorcycles. I'm a fair-weather rider, just on, on a proper, I'm thinking of.
Well, I quit riding for a long time. My first book here, like, over twenty-five years ago, I was still riding. And I rode a lot. And then I just got bored, and I quit. Like, three years ago, and I was in a small interview. So now I got the little roll-in, so I'm a little bit tired. And I bought a six. But, yeah, I figured it was time to get back in, where I really got to. We have. Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, I wish everybody'd get back, so we could get started. Head now?
See you, brother.
That's a good sign.
We're all still friends, aren't we? Don't you lie to me. I've known you two years.
Let him in.
Do you think it's time, Alma?
It's weird being up here for this. You want your chair back? Sorry, really crowded.
Yeah, no worries.
So I have that app, Simon.
I don't want it.
It still goes up there?
I don't know, the normal, the normal.
We have a judge that repeatedly answers his phone. Not least the room, sit there and talk to the entire thing. No telling. I'm about to throw you out.
I told that. I told the guy with Granbury, get your ass out of that chair. I told him I couldn't.
I don't either, I don't watch.
You need a pressure. You need a press, you know, the old timey hat, the little press thing in it?
Yeah, I've never. Only whenever I go to game, yo, if I show you. I've talked to Ed Lutz about that.
Where's Stacy? Where's Tina?
And then that's the only thing they know that you're seeing is comedy, and it's just a good thing. So it'd be like this. That's all it does.
I'm supposed to be there.
And then you'll still get all the notifications, you'll just be like, how much damage?
All right, guys, we're back in session. So again, we're gonna go through some stuff, but, but I don't think we should vote on anything.
I don't know, Mark's not, not sure.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so, uh, like to have everyone acknowledge the Tax Assessor Collector October Activity Report in your packet. Like to acknowledge the October Activity Report from Constable Brian Little in your packet. I'd like to acknowledge the receipt of the Hotel Occupancy Tax Report, six thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty cents for September of twenty twenty-five from the Wildcat Ranch LLC. Like to acknowledge the receipt of the Hotel Occupancy Tax Report for forty-three dollars for September of twenty twenty-five from the Cabinet Salt Fork Ranch. Item sworn five are the minutes, we've got the minutes to discuss and approve the amended county clerk minutes from the previous meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Um, those all have my updates in it that's in your packet. I don't think we ought to vote on it until the next meeting. Um, item number five, discuss and consider the county clerk meetings from October of twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. I went through and made my comments on here. I've got, I've got a lot of adjustments on it, not more gift to Tina. But, um, if y'all could give her your comments on the minutes, and then she can update this for Monday, but, um. Okay, um, item number seven, consider the auditors' budget amendments and vouchers payable. Could you present those? And then, I don't think we're gonna vote on it, but I know that the commissioners have, um, reviewed and signed off on them. But can you just present them?
Yes, I will. So I have a few twenty-fives. We're getting down to the nitty-gritty for her, so we're getting them where they have to be paid. Uh, the total, and it's all out of the general for twenty-five, is six thousand three fifteen eighty-two. Uh, on the F Y twenty-six, I have a lot more. Uh, there is Donald Butane included. Total of the, of everything is two hundred one thousand and eight dollars and twenty percent. And out of the general fund is a hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred sixteen twenty-eight.
I think we'll officially vote on that next Monday when we do this meeting, but, um. But they, I mean, y'all already signed off and approved it, so she will pay the bills, but then we'll officially vote for it in court on the next one meeting. So let's move to item number eight. We have two, um, employee bonds. One is Vanessa Correa in the county attorney's office, and that's five thousand dollars. And the second one is Jessica Edwards, who's the deputy tax collector, five thousand dollars. That's not a time sensitive, is it? So we'll just table that till the next meeting. Um, consider the extension agents' October report request for reimbursement. Penny Baron, two thousand three hundred sixty-three dollars and forty-two cents, and Savannah Williams, four hundred forty-one dollars. That is a little time sensitive, isn't it?
Yes, and they are in today's vouchers, but I need to correct Penny's because, um, she, her math wasn't correct. Uh, hers is actually one thousand seven thirty-seven twenty-eight.
Give me that number one, huh?
Yes, sir, one thousand seven hundred thirty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents, and they are keyed in for today's vouchers.
Okay.
So y'all can approve that on, I mean, we've gone over and audited, and they're all correct.
Okay. So we're good, wait until Monday for that?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna discuss the October Activity Report for the jail and sheriff's office. You might come.
Well, I haven't voted on that.
Information.
I already done this without our permission.
Maybe some of the sunny part, if we continue doing that.
You just pointed out, making it feel neglected.
All right, so we're gonna do the patrol side of it first.
Lifestyle complaints, still, like, what happens if you have.
Mental health calls?
Yeah, and, and, uh, total two hundred forty-nine service calls, it's staying right there.
Well, that's actually pretty good, you were able to defer fifty percent of your, you, you were able to de-escalate fifty percent of your mental health calls this month. So, that's good.
Superbosse is, the good is the last one also.
This might be your record layout now as a graphic for traffic stops, but that's a, that's a big number.
So then, uh, also the good part about it is the very bottom. The, uh, the amount of the drugs that we have seized. Yeah, that's good, we got all of them. Do you have any questions about that?
No.
I'll move to the jail.
What's total today?
Uh, ninety-six, twenty-two over, and we're in county.
That's awesome. It's good for the budget.
Supper misses a budget very well.
It does, it does.
Oh, a lot of it's juvenile, yeah, a lot of it.
We have had an incredible rash of juveniles. In fact, I'm leaving with one of the school counselors tomorrow to talk about that. Just try to, I'm interested to hear what her ideas are, but.
No reimbursements, I talked to, uh, captain, and she said we had, right, as of right now, we had no outstanding reimbursements.
No outstanding.
So. But even our travel miles for pickup and transport inmates are up pretty good, too.
Well, just let juvenile alone out there, eighteen hundred forty-eight, it's six transports.
Doesn't take long when you're driving to Garza County.
Doesn't take long.
Two or three times every time we do it.
The last one, we've been able, you know, we always, we started the closest one.
Yeah.
And work our way out. This last time, we actually got a kid into Wichita Falls, which is very, very nice.
The bad thing about that, I don't understand, though, is we think of the next guilty, but if one of theirs comes in that needs that bed, we ain't gonna get him put somewhere else.
We've been fortunate, though, we haven't been kicked out once we've gotten in, but it could happen.
It can happen.
What was that, uh?
Granbury.
Granbury, yes. That's the way it was there.
That's the way it was, we ain't gonna be.
Yep. Which makes no sense.
Do we have any, um, comments on either the jail or sheriff's office report? If not, do you have, um, someone from CoLogic to talk to us today?
I don't think anybody's here from CoLogic.
It is an agreement y'all will have to vote on.
Gotcha.
But you can talk about it. We talked about it.
Let's talk about it, but.
Kind of what happened, we budgeted for this already, for this kind of, but.
But it's gone up since.
They put up a little bit more than what we budgeted.
So this is, this is about what we kept that due?
About a thousand, over a thousand, I think. No. It depends on which way you want to go. So, if y'all want copies of it, or we can, I can get some.
This what we have?
They're in the package.
Yeah, we got, we got it. So, okay, so one of these is for one seventeen twenty-six.
One for five years. And the one for five years is thirty-five, four thirty-five.
So this is five years?
Versus three years, yeah.
On that five-year one, is there a way we can get out of that, we can get out of?
I haven't talked, to be honest with you, I remember.
I thought we all had ninety days.
It has something, it was some thirty to sixty, ninety days.
So remind me what the logic is.
That's the only one we can go over three years.
Is the county, the use and the dispensing or recording.
So we go three years.
Say that again, sir.
That's the only way we go over three years, three years is normal. It's like we have a five-year on our contract with the electric company on electric bill, but we have a way out of that.
Yeah.
It's in the clause.
It's in the clause.
Uh, when we did the, I think whenever we were going over, uh, in court, before we hired, we asked that if we can get out with a ninety-day notice, and I think they can get out with a ninety-day notice.
So with us not being able to vote on it, y'all voting on it today.
We can vote.
I could, but I could.
Yeah, let's calm down, let's, let's look at the, let's look at what that five-year contract says. So if you can get that to us, that would be helpful. Okay, so we're gonna table item eleven?
Yes.
All right, you have anything else for us, Sheriff? All right, let's move to item.
Everybody's good, everybody's got them running, and we just gotta, we gotta have a key to people from here to there.
What's our plan on the ones that would be taken out of service?
So, I think we have, we'll get them ready and we'll let you know.
Are we gonna try selling with what equipment you have on?
I wouldn't.
To another, to another.
If you can get them that way, but, I mean, we've never sold them into another agency.
I know we did, uh, I'll need my own, but. That's the only one we did.
I guess we did.
I didn't know if there's another, of course, now that we're getting three hundred fifty, if they're getting extra money, then they probably get to brand new stuff now, so.
So how do y'all want to help and talk about it?
What do you need, no, I mean, like?
Just jerk the gear and saddle it.
Well, if you link the gear on, we can sell it for gun deals if it's not, whatever you're not gonna use.
My problem is, when we do that, you go to somebody that's really nice, you know? I hear that they, was a, a little brother. I mean, it was marked just like. So, I mean.
Like an hour.
That's what I worry about.
Thanks, Travis. Thank you all.
Can't sell to individual.
No, but you can do it also.
Yes.
Yeah. Probably, probably.
Maybe some towns out there less.
All right. All right, item number twelve, discuss and consider a resolution one thirty-one, fiscal year twenty twenty-six, opposing the renewal of a TV DES permit number W Q zero 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 five two one three zero zero zero, and calling for a full and fair contested case hearing to protect the interests of affected communities from the PK Light Association. Mr. Monty Lehman.
Gentlemen.
Mr. Sir.
How you doing? Nice to be here, very interesting morning.
I'm Ben, your sheriff, commissioner, court leader of Palopinto County. Thank y'all, uh. I think one of those officers. Okay. This, uh, this is just a deal that we published and are handing out to people for our public outreach. Uh, I think you have, uh, copies of our resolution. I'm a little bit disappointed in the fact that y'all aren't to be able to vote on it today. It is a time sensitive issue because we needed it.
Well, I think this one doesn't happen to me, so I'm not as concerned about this one.
Uh, this would be great.
But let's, I, but I'm, I'm not sure what they, what their opinion is, but, so explain to us exactly what you're, and I've heard all this, it's about stuff with your mom. Explain to them why we're, um, explain to them why you're, why you're doing that.
Uh, the city of Abilene has a contract to purchase water from Possum Kingdom, we have no issue with that. Uh, I think their contract is set for like fourteen thousand gallons of guy or something like, I, I can't remember exactly. Originally, they were gonna take that water from that old Cur McGee plant, take it to Breckenridge, they built a plant in Breckenridge to RO it, treat it. And then they were gonna take that water and originally they were gonna go through Ivan from Breckenridge Highway and dump it into the Razzes at South Bend. I don't know if y'all remember this, but I believe it was Carvin Stevens, along with some parts and wildlife, people and things like that, he got that stopped. And it was stopped, uh, because of a danger species of some kind. Well, they had already built the line and I think it's about five miles, uh, south of Ivans where it stopped. And they stopped it there, well, city of Abilene then went back to TCEQ and applied for another permit. Then continued the line down from Ivan down eleven forty-eight and put it in the lake. At, uh, what used to be called the old baby's camp, if you're familiar with that. Well, because it was in Stevens County, that part of the lake is in Stevens County, they only had to, they only had to publish or put in record their permit from TCEQ. And publish it for public, for public viewing in Stevens County. And we kind of became, we kind of got laid to the swimming game, the main body of Possum Kingdom, I live in Palopinto County. Well, anyway, we got to do some research and found out just exactly what was gonna be, what was gonna happen. And that's when we hired a hydrologist, uh, probably one of the best known hydrologists in the state. We hired two divers and we hired a water log. And we are basically contesting them putting the, that much of fluid back into Possum Kingdom. The amount and the manner in which they want to do it, that's our main contest. Want to put it back into the lake in an area that has no, no flow, shallow. And we just think that it's going to endanger that part of the lake to the point where it's gonna kill that part of the lake. We, we hired a lawyer, our lawyers have tried to talk to Abilene about some adjustments, changes, can they put it in the lake somewhere else, can they take and put it somewhere else? Anyway, it's gotten to the point where we had a, we had a hearing, a public hearing, was requested by our then representative Lynn Rogers. And, uh, we got a public hearing which we held out at, uh, Possum Kingdom. People were there, uh, voicing their complaints. All of our, a lot of our people did written comments, had written concerns for TCEQ, which they're allowed to do. TCEQ took all these comments, all these concerns, then responded to them. But, uh, they are balking on a contested case hearing, which could be our next.
Did TCEQ miss balking?
TCEQ have bawled. And, uh, basically that's what this resolution is about. Uh, my wife took a similar resolution to Breckenridge this morning, they passed it. Another lake took a similar resolution to the county of Palopinto and they passed it, I just found out. And so, uh, y'all being the other county that kind of surrounds Possum Kingdom, that's why we're reaching out to you for your support in this resolution. Uh, I would point out on this resolution, uh, do y'all have, do they have copies of it?
They have copies of it, and I'll, and I'll read it during.
Okay. The, uh, the, the three parts of it that, uh, I think the three main parts, the second one. Whereas the city of Abilene has submitted application to Texas Commission on Environmental Quality for renewal without modifications, that's wrong, we have found that out. There's been changes since they first applied for this permit. Uh, there's been monitors that have been placed in the lake since they applied for this permit that have proven that there is no flow, no current at all in that part of the lake.
So you're saying that the paragraph that says whereas the city of Abilene's formal response to those citizens concerned choosing not to acknowledge.
And the sixth having to do with, with, basically they're not listening to us. And we want this contested case hearing so we can present our evidence. So far, nobody's listened to us, we tried to talk to Abilene, they won't listen to us. TCEQ basically has, they're not listening to us either.
So what Abilene's doing is taking their wastewater that's been treated?
And they're looking to put it back into Possum Kingdom.
Wichita Falls doing the same thing at their, I understand, the lake area?
Probably doing the same thing. We have, we have currently three water plants on Possum Kingdom that do the same thing. But, but you can take their combined amount of the fluid and it's, and it's about a fourth of what Abilene's wanting to put back in our lake. The other thing is they're putting their fluid back into the lake, the main body of the lake where it's deep and where there's current. So that it can mix that, where they're wanting to do this, again, it's shallow and no current.
Is it coming on a pipe or is it coming just in a creek, what do they do?
No, it's coming, it's in a pipe.
It's in a pipe?
They, uh, you know, they've, uh, there's a couple of things, well, one of the things about this TCEQ permit is it's what I call a self-reporting permit. Abilene, in a sense, has to report if there's any changes. Well, they're not acknowledging any changes or modifications. Well, there's already, since they've applied for the permit, as I said a while ago, there's been several modifications and changes that have occurred and they are not acknowledging. The pipe that they have already installed in the lake is supposed to be perpendicular with the shoreline, it's just from the shoreline, it should go out, okay? When they installed it, it's installed, it's, it's out at about forty-five degree angle, runs pretty close to parallel with the shoreline. So there's a change and they haven't acknowledged yet. We have, and we have proof of that, we have divers that went out and buoyed the line and took pictures and drawn footage of it so that we know exactly where that discharge line is. And we've got, uh, and they have, uh, USG Geological Society, I think it is, installed flow monitors in that part of the lake. Since they applied for this permit and it shows that there is no water flow, there is no current flow in that part of the lake. And those are just some of the concerns that we raised about all this, but again, nobody's listening to us, nobody is paying any attention to any of this evidence we have. But this is not gonna be a good, a good deal. And we just want y'all's support in us trying to get this thing pushed to a contested case hearing so we can offer our evidence that this is not gonna work.
When is the deadline that you need this?
The deadline for this being TCEQ is today. And, uh, we, this is with.
This is a non-monitory thing, I think, I don't, I don't, if y'all want to, I don't have a problem with us voting.
I have no problem.
Here's something I was reading on this, uh, that at four inches deep, the amount of water they're talking about dumping would cover thirteen point nine acres, nearly fourteen acres a day. Four inches deep in water. So, that, that to give you a general idea of how big an area it would actually be in square footage of water.
And the other thing too is at, uh, the permit, Abilene's not gonna be required to do any monitoring in the lake. Now, they have to monitor the amount, the fluid that comes from the system to the discharge point. But they, they are not gonna be required to put any monitoring in the lake to see how it's affecting the lake. And, uh. Anyway.
I wonder why TCEQ isn't listening?
Because they just wrote a stamp with Abilene on square.
Where Abilene wants.
TCEQ. Is this off the record?
No.
We wanna know though.
It's, it's, it's frustrating. It is frustrating because TCEQ in my mind should be an advocate for the people of the state of Texas and for the environment. In this case right here, they are being an advocate for Abilene.
Let me read your resolution, so this is. Whoops, there we go. Uh, resolution one thirty-one dash fiscal year twenty twenty-six, Young County Commissioners Court, opposing the renewal of TPDES permit number WQ zero 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 five two one three zero zero zero. And calling for a full and fair contested case hearing to protect the interests of the affected communities. Whereas Young County recognizes the importance of maintaining the health and quality of our local environment and water resources. And whereas the city of Abilene has submitted an application to the TCEQ for renewal without modification of TPDES permit number, I'm not gonna read that number again. And whereas Young County has concerns regarding the potential impact of this permit renewal for the eco, eco, ecological integrity, water quality and public health of the Possum Kingdom Lake region. And whereas citizens from Young County and surrounding counties have submitted numerous written comments providing factual evidence in attended public hearings, a great personal effort to ensure that their concerns were respected, heard and made part of the public record. And whereas the city of Abilene's formal response to those citizens' concerns choosing not to acknowledge the substantial new information and changed circumstances presented and offered no factual rebuttal or meaningful engagement demonstrates disregard for the legitimate interest, excuse me, of this, of the communities directly affected by the proposed discharge. And whereas the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality's Office of Public Interest, Interest Council by some, by summarily, boy, my English is just gonna get butchered on this, concurring with Abilene's position without substantive evaluation of the citizens' input has further undermined public confidence in the fairness of the permitting process. And whereas the Young County Commissioners Court finds this lack of meaningful consideration and transparency deeply troubling and stands in solidarity with the citizens in neighboring counties who seek only a fair and objective review through a contested case hearing. Now therefore be it resolved that Young, that Young County strongly opposes the renewal of TPDES permit number WQ zero 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 five two one three zero 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 as currently proposed. And be it further resolved that Young County urges the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality to deny the renewal and to grant contested case hearing so that all evidence and expert testament, testimony may be properly evaluated in an open and transparent manner. And be it further resolved that the Commissioners Court expresses profound disappointment in the dismissive response from the city of Abilene and the perfunctory concurrence of the OPIC, which collectively failed to honor the public's right to be heard in matters of critical environmental and community importance. And be it finally resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, the Office of Public Interest Council in the city of Abilene and to the governing bodies of other affected counties as well as to the state legislative delegation representing this region. Adopted the tenth day of November twenty twenty-five by the Commissioners Court of Young County, Texas, approved and adopted the fat of this. Thoughts?
They use some big words.
Those are some big words, I got, I got tripped up.
Can we pledge our, ourselves to rat fight in our next meeting and make that work or do we need to rat?
There's no money involved with this, I, I, I don't have, I don't think I have, I, I personally don't have a problem with us voting on this, there, there's a, there's a. If we're, if we're for this, there is a time concern as to when it can be used. There's no financial consideration, there's no budget consideration.
Judge Graham, could I?
Yes.
The only, the only reason I came today was this, this island.
Uh-huh.
I served on, um, a committee for the city of Graham, for Young County and everything when we were doing the hundred year water plan. Uh, it, we had a group called Midway Group and we were stationed in Breckenridge, Texas. And the plan was is to use that water line, Cur McGee line, and ship water to Breckenridge. And, uh, they were treated, then they were distributed all over west Texas, like Rock Garden, Stanford, all over that area. Well, about the only thing we learned out of that group is that if it's, if you're in a drought and it rains for the next day, your group's gonna get blocked. But Abilene is a water boss and they're getting their water out of the lake, or Breckenridge's lake, thirteen million gallons a day. Okay? So when that lake goes way down, it's not because of drought, it's because it's being drained. But they're governed by the west Texas Water District, which basically means they can go out and get all the water. And that's what, that's what you're looking at here by the fact that now they're saying we want to dump the affluent back into Possum Kingdom Lake. We, the county of Young and the city have a vested interest in that lake that we pay for, that we've never exercised. But we're getting to the point where with this progress and everything that we heard today.
We're, we're close to needing.
We're, we're right on the board.
Yeah.
So I would recommend, well done, and please, your support, that's all I have.
I think it's time, why don't you back there and want your water back? That can happen one point, but I just got.
That, that, and that's what, that's what Wichita is doing with, with there is, is they're maintaining that level of vibration of what they would have, they're putting it back in, trying to maintain that level. And they should do the same thing with Oklahoma.
Well, see, and, and at Breckenridge, if, if, we wouldn't have such heart turnover if they would have at least put the affluent back into the lake where it has current and where it's deep, where it can mix. But where they're wanting to put it in the lake right now, it's gonna kill that Cedar Creek part of the lake. And that's, and, yeah, that's what, that's what we're waiting for.
Having all effluent over there.
Yes. And you, and you can see right there just how much they're, how much they can, that's their limit, I believe it is, is what they can put in, back into the lake per day.
That's a lot of water.
Now, here's the other thing about it too, originally in their permit, it was, we're only gonna use this in conditions of drought. We're gonna use this as a backup, okay? We're gonna use this as a backup, okay? So what happens in Possum Kingdom when we get into the drought? But we, you know, the last main drought we had, we were sixteen foot low. If that lake drops to sixteen foot low, those little discharge risers that come up out of that pipe are gonna be sticking out of the water. And they're gonna be putting one point five million gallons a day back into the lake.
What do they put it in?
They're not. The, they, they haven't yet to turn that plan on. See, originally, they, like I said, they were gonna run it down to South Bend, and that got stopped. So they stopped the construction of the line, and they haven't used that plant yet. They've got contracted water, uh, they've been paying for the water, they just haven't been using it.
They laid that line down the highway already.
They laid it down eleven forty-eight?
Yeah. They've laid all that, 'cause that's what they've been working on last summer.
But I, I don't think, and I could be wrong, I don't think they've connected it to where it stopped on this side of Ivan. I don't think, but I'm, I'm pretty certain on that. So they still have that. But they've yet to turn that plan on, in record.
Would someone like to make a motion to pass resolution one thirty-one opposing the renewal of the TPDES permit?
So move.
Uh, we have a motion from Commissioner Cresswell. Is there a second to that motion? Second from Commissioner Shook. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You bet. Let me uh, we'll all sign this, we'll give it to the clerk after the meeting, and she'll need to stamp it and everything, and then she can get you a copy to take.
Okay. Great, great. Thank you. You got it. Uh, just FYI, I got a call about all this other was going on. I'm gonna meet the uh, I'm gonna meet an Abilene reporter, a Thelwady station reporter in Breckenridge tomorrow. And uh, he's gonna wait at the plant, and we're gonna, I'm gonna bring you down to the bay and show him around after the call.
Somebody text me, it's all the way to Babys Camp, and it was two summers ago.
Yeah, but, but what they did was, if I remember right, they put it in the, they put the discharge line in the lake. And then they were gonna go back up and connect it to that line on the other side of Ivan. But they've already got the discharge line in the lake. Thank you, gentlemen. It's gonna pleasure you. You need all you guys.
You bet. Good luck. If you just, if you can wait around, you can get this from the, from the clerk once we're down there.
Come to Possum Kingdom.
All right, item number thirteen, discuss and consider estimates of CCS Customs tent windows that can only add annex. J.P. Stewart is here.
How are y'all?
We're good.
So, as you know, did y'all get a copy of this?
Yes.
So they put the new windows in, obviously, so there's no blinds, there's no nothing. So, everybody from the realm can see them on the lower level. So that creates a security issue, not only a sunlight issue in the mornings, I can't even sit at my desk and have the office door open to Laura's area without being blinded from the sun. Because I do create, yeah, yeah, it's gonna be my head. But honestly, and ultimately, the ma- the major concern I have is a security issue. I did do two quotes, the eleven windows is just specifically the constable's office. Start, if you're familiar with the building, the constable's office starts on the east, southeast side.
Southeast corner.
And come around and around to the front, okay? Um, but that doesn't include what is now, you have the probation office, and then you have the tag office right there on that side, on the north side of the building. To include all the lower level, that's the second quote that I gave you, that's thirty-eight forty-two. Um, obviously, there is gonna be some changes, I'm being told about tag office going to the old PDE and all that. So technically, if we did, I think looks-wise, we should do all the windows on the, on the lower level just to make the building, I mean, they're doing a lot of work, spending a lot of money to make that building look good.
The building's gonna look great.
Yes, yes.
It already looks like a lot better.
So much better. And that's all I'm trying to do is make it look better. I didn't wanna put blinds that are gonna turn yellow eventually, especially on our side because of the Possum sunlight. Uh, this, the reason we have to go with the mirror window tent is because of gas in the window panes. So it, you just do regular tent, it doesn't get the heat out fast enough when they break the window panes. So that's why we have to do the mirror window tent in order.
Like the window panes have gas injected in them on purpose? For, for insulation, insulation reasons?
Is the mirror tent gonna cause a driving hazard outside the building?
No, all the main street is, is mirrored. It can drive down all, almost every business on the, on Main Street has a mirror window tent.
They're facing the east and west, their north is out on Main Street.
It's gonna be a problem with the park department coming out, they'll be buying.
Yeah.
What did we build in the courthouse, the Alny courthouse budget for stuff like that?
Uh, I have that in hot little hand.
Originally, I thought the EDC was gonna do this, this is why I didn't come at budget time. But I think they hit a lot of snags along the way, they've had to spend a lot more money than they're funding along, so.
Have you tried to put blinds wood?
Uh, so you'd have to specially order them, 'cause they're not, or you'd have to go with the cheap ones like those.
You can't sell them cheap?
Yeah. They looked into.
You're saying you're high dollar?
No. I'm just trying to make the building look good. Just trying to make it look good.
Senator, you, we had.
Yeah. But they are different special-sized windows, so we would have to special.
Window's different in that.
Ours are weird. Uh, we had put in the building maintenance, we'd put twelve thousand five hundred, but I thought some of that, y'all had talked about for the tag.
We talked about security doors.
Yeah.
Those were a big place.
Part of that's gonna be for the tag office.
The tag office reconstructing.
But with them moving that office over, that's gonna change that plan we had originally?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think we ought to vote on this today, because it's.
I thought since he's here, maybe he can go ahead and present what y'all have talked about.
Yeah, no, I, I think it's good that you're presenting, and we can.
I don't wanna take away from the tag office, just so we're clear that you can see that money, I don't wanna do that.
So you don't wanna do it?
No, I wanna do it, but I know Tom, they don't have, y'all have y'all plans with that.
We can vote no for, later. I can, I can tell you this, CCS done a good job on the uh, office out there at Mayord, and he did a real good job.
I will indicate everything. They also did one of the mirrors annex, where the main windows could, could shine in there in the afternoon, so that had to be a whole bunch.
So, let's table this. Commissioner Craig's gonna get with uh, J.P. Stewart, go out there, put eyes on him. And um, that way next, next week, we can, he can, he can give us a firsthand kind of, kind of uh, report on it. Does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Tina, are we gonna table fifteen and sixteen?
Yes.
We'll table fifteen and sixteen. Um, seventeen, discuss and consider accepting and rejecting the gazebo bids.
We'll table that.
You wanna table that? Um, discuss and consider subdivision application, the table? Are they gonna come next week? I think so. Dada?
I doubt it.
Okay.
Current information of that, from the level, one gallon a minute.
One gallon a minute?
Yes. Yes.
That's kind of what we, it's sitting there at the table, we kind of thought.
Yes.
Or maybe they, maybe it was two gallons a minute is what we thought it was.
One, one twenty-four, I think, was the number that was thrown out when we were at the table.
Okay. All right, this I am comfortable talking about, discuss and consider burn restriction. I don't see any reason to take them off.
No.
No reason?
No action.
Okay. So one thing that was interesting, and Jared was here, but um, he put out a map on the chief's text group of the United States in a fire risk, and everything was no risk, lighter risk. We were the hottest, highest-risk portion of the entire United States over the weekend.
Yes.
I know, we were fortunate, but we were, if you were gonna, if you were in Vegas, you were gonna be betting on, if you're betting on anyone, you're gonna be betting on us and fires, so.
My, my house across from the woods was the house.
Was it?
Yes.
All right, so we will, no action now. Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, motion, second. If they're all in favor, adjourn. So, loudly, Craig. Oh, thank you. I would not have noticed.
I gotta go sign off on your office now.
Does he vote?